We will call our meeting to order tonight. Amy, if you would do the roll call, please.
English?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Eddinger?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Yep.
Miller?
Here.
We rise for the invocation. We have Pastor David Bond with Capella Church here tonight. Welcome.
Can we pray together? Heavenly Father, it is a privilege for me to be here tonight, this evening. Father, and as a 22-year resident, I am proud of the city that I am from. Father, I pray for protection as we look to the future. I pray for each one of these individuals, these men and women standing before me. Father, that you would protect them. I thank you for the diversity of background that they come from, Father. And I pray, as they go about their business tonight, Lord, that they would use the standard of whatever is pure, noble, and just to make their decisions. Father, I thank you not only for their contribution in this chamber, but individually in this community. Father, I thank you for the set of values that they represent to uphold. Father, I thank you for where we've been, and I thank you for how bright the future looks because of men and women like these, Father. Father, thank you. I pray in their decision-making that their decisions would be decisive. Father, and I think if any, any one individual lacks any wisdom at any time, that they would go to the source of wisdom. Father, we want to honor and glorify you in all that we do. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Woody, leave us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all.
Don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight, so we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 18-002.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Amy?
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council shall have three minutes to do so on any city-related business matter. Anyone wishing to come forward and give a public comment at this time?
Good evening. My name is Jesse Warburton. I've been living here about a year and a half. I go by the entertainment name of Brother Music. You may have seen me downtown next to my blue van playing music on the street. Had a great summer and fall last year, and I tell people that the people of Coeur d'Alene have lifted me to the highest point of my 55 years of playing music. And I'd love to stay living here, but I have found out just in the last couple of days that you don't have any really precise ordinances involving street musicians or buskers like me. And this took place in Sandpoint, where I was living before, and the city council addressed it, and they changed the ordinance and allowed me and others to play amplified music next to their vehicle. I would just be hoping that you folks could address that issue for people like me, so I can feel comfortable here and not feel that anybody who makes a phone call that doesn't like what's on the side of my van or my looks or whatever can complain, and the police officer is immediately right there, not telling me to stop. But, you know, it just doesn't really enhance your way of performing when you have to answer a lot of questions, and you become a spectacle. So I'm just hoping that you all would come up with some kind of resolution that makes it possible for people like me to play amplified music in town. In Sandpoint, they have a, they changed their ordinance to 70 dBs within 50 feet. That's pretty loud.
Yeah.
That would be loud enough for me, for sure. So anyway, I like Coeur d'Alene. I don't want to have to move to some big city where they have a lot of street players. I'd rather do my music right here, so, thank you for listening.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a follow-up question to Mr. Gridley. Are you in the loop on this? Because I know this came up several months ago regarding busking and downtown, and I know there, we have a, we have a rule against panhandling, but also people like Mr. Warburton have a First Amendment right to be on the street and do whatever they want. So where are we on, on this? Are you aware of where? I know Kathy Lewis was working on it. She's gone. Renata's not here, so I'm asking you to probably do something you're not ready for.
Well, this is one of those summer problems that kind of fades in January, but, no, I have not been aware of any conversations or any instructions recently to be doing anything with this. I know it was a problem, like I said, a summer issue or complaint. We do have an ordinance that prohibits amplified music that's plainly audible from 50 feet away. That would probably affect almost all amplified music, but I don't think we're working actively on anything involving busking or that kind of situation.
Well, should we?
Well, didn't this come up during the Arts Commission? Aren't they looking at that later on? Maybe somebody else knows about that.
I guess the issue is amplification. I think that Sam has talked about that before with the Arts Commission as far as busking. Amplification of the music, I believe, gets to be problematic, but Sam, you might talk about the, because it had come before us a few months back.
Yeah, we've had inquiries over the last year and a half regarding busking. The Arts Commission itself supports the idea of some type of system for street musicians or street performers. They created a subcommittee related to that. We actually had some folks that applied for grant funding for similar types of things. They didn't earn an award, but we had some of those for the first time because you now allow funding for community art support, performing arts. That subcommittee will be working to discuss, up here soon, we wanted to do it in the wintertime, starting to discuss the idea of street performing and really to get initially an education on what we can or cannot do. There is case law regarding these issues. Other communities have already dealt with it, including Seattle, and so we're going to have an education process, and we're also going to ensure that the Downtown Association is part of that discussion to ensure that they're aware of what we can or cannot do. And we want to find a balanced solution that continues to promote Downtown adequately in the right way. So we are starting that process right now, but we haven't gotten to it yet with all the projects in line. We're hoping here soon, within the next month.
Oh, cool. Okay. Woody?
It seems that it kind of runs similar to the food trucks, you know? If you want a food truck in front of your restaurant, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Do you want somebody playing amplified music in front of your, I don't know, your bar? You know, does that, it seemed like that would come into play at some point where, where do you do it? Where it's not infringing on somebody else's?
I actually hadn't contemplated amplified music in the street performance issue we're talking about, so maybe we should have this committee start looking at that to ensure that whatever we come up with, it's clear, one way or the other, what we do or do not support. As of now, I believe amplified music in this way would not be permitted without a special event permit of some kind.
Right. I think, Sam, that the issue too was you guys were looking for maybe where music would be allowed, in what areas, and there'd be an area where it wouldn't do what you were talking about, would? Where it wouldn't be like right in front of a business or disrupt what they're doing, but allow street performers to be on the street at some place.
Correct, and we'll utilize our relationship and partnership with the Downtown Association to help guide that as well. We want to make sure it's enjoyable for the Downtown businesses, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else have public comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Woody?
I've got a little one, so it seems like last time I was here, I talked about the skate park a lot. So in February next month, about a month from today, the skate park kids, well, I shouldn't say the kids, because they're all grown up now, are doing a fundraiser. And this is more than what I can remember doing a fundraiser for them was selling a lot of hamburgers and giving them the money, and then they'd give it to the winner of the contest at the fundraiser. So what I've learned is that this next level of fundraising for the skate park is kind of more, it's not aimed at the skate kids, I call them kids, but it's aimed at the community. And it was, I was, met with a fellow today who was trying to explain to me the skate park community, because I always thought, you know, you go down to the skate park and the kids are skating around, and, you know, that was it. And he's got this different vision that I had never even thought about, and then it made me think about how I envision skating right now at this age in my life. I'll go down to the skate park and I'll watch a kid, little kid, with a board, and you can tell he's not comfortable, and he's not, hasn't done it a lot, and he's trying, and he's falling, and he's getting frustrated, and he's kind of maybe making bad words and pounding his board, you know, that craziness that comes along with trying to learn new things. And I'll watch him for a while, and pretty soon, it's the guys around him that seem to keep encouraging him. And skating isn't a team thing. It's not a coach yelling at you and teaching you how to do it until you get it right, and then when you get a touchdown or a home run, you get an attaboy. Skating is this process of, it's your thing. It's your efforts, it's your time, and it's your many, many failures. You fall down a lot, and then all of a sudden, it comes to you and you get the trick or do the thing you're trying to learn. And I think in the big picture, that's kind of what this community support for a skate park is. Skating's just different. It's very individual. Like I said, it's not team, and it's the community around those kids, those other skaters, that have all been through it, and they help support each other. And so I'm hoping that this fundraiser, they're real excited about the new park being built, and they're trying to add some more funds to possibly put a bowl in, which is another piece of their puzzle. So I just wanted to kind of remind people that skating isn't always the thugs and all the tough times we've had with skateboards over the years and the evolution, and hopefully you can support it, come to it, or donate something to be raffled off, and it should be real interesting. It's a, it's a different approach, and I'm trying to wrap my head around it, so I encourage everybody to step up a little, maybe.
When is the fundraiser?
February 17th at the Coeur d'Alene Resort. They're kind of upgrading, you know? Normally, we'd do it in somebody's backyard or something, you know? So this is, this is community.
Fancy deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've already stepped up, haven't you?
Will they be skating like down the parking garage?
No. It's all...
And not on the carpet either.
Oh.
I think they're having a famous skateboarder come and talk, and it should be real fascinating. So I am, I'm a big supporter of it like the rest of you guys here, and it's, it's exciting. It's exciting, so we're trying something different.
Thanks, Woody.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any announcements tonight? Okay. We will move on to Public Works. We have Resolution Number 18-003, Approval of a Consultant Services Agreement with FCS Group, Inc. for a Water Rate Study. Terry Pickles here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to come for you tonight. As you mentioned, we have the service contract filing for FCS Group out of Redmond, Washington to do our, conduct our water rate study. As I've talked about, I think it was early November when I was here last time regarding this, we do a rate study every five years, and we do a comp plan update every 10 years, so this rate study here is in between, so it'll kind of review our comp plans, which are about a 10-year document for the planning horizon, so this will further improve on the existing comp plan and what projects we have delineated for that portion of it. We only had one consultant submit for the rate study, and they came back with an initial proposal of $73,080. We have $60,000 budgeted for the line item. We went back through negotiations and pared it down as best we could. They got down to $60,435, so we're recommending the contract to go for that. We won't need to do any budget amendment, because we will have savings in other projects that will cover that portion of it. We'll be looking at our water rates with various classifications. We might look at increasing some of the classifications. We have a block increase only on residential. We don't have it on irrigation, so we'll take a look at that. We'll take a look at our boosted zones, and we'll be looking at different types of rate structures. We do have service outside city limits, so that will kind of fall into that, too. We'll take a look at that and see whether there's any difference in cost there for service inside and outside the city limits. And we'll be looking at our cap fees, so make sure that we're doing an equitable job of charging the cap fees properly per the latest lawsuit with Hayden and IBCA. So with that, I'm asking for authorization for the mayor to sign the contract.
Thank you, Terry. Questions for Terry? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry, I was not at Public Works.
We missed you.
No, you didn't. And, but...
I asked a lot of questions.
Kiki asked a lot of questions, so thank you, Kiki. And one of the questions was on public involvement with this, and I read over the attachment that talks about what they're going to do, and it doesn't look like there's any money in there for the consultant to come over and run a public comment form or anything, but, but we can do it. So could you make sure that that's part of this process as this goes forward, that at some point in there, and I don't know if this needs to be part of the motion, or if you can just go ahead and do it, but get together with Sam and hold a public forum with just Water Department and city people and to allow for feedback with the public? Because it just, if you look at the schedule in here, there's no money. I mean, you really got them down, which I appreciate, so, but they're, they're not going to be, and they're coming over here when it's convenient once, so I think if we took it upon ourselves to communicate that to the public...
Yes, we plan on doing that as part of the project. They are working with Hayden, and they are working with Post Falls, I believe, so they will be over here occasionally. If we can work it out when it's there, we can do it when they're here, that's fine. If not, then we'll, like I said, we'll take it on ourselves to do it and present it to the public, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that effort, and I appreciate that Kiki made it, brought it up, too.
If I could get some clarification, we always love public engagement. What are we hoping to receive back from the community related specifically to the rate study? That would, so that we can structure properly the forum?
Well, you, well, we want to, I mean, Kiki brought it up, so she could probably add some stuff on as well, but I just think, you know, we're going to be doing something, and it's going to hit a lot of people as a surprise, because, I mean, you know, like Dan said at the meeting, are they going to go up? You know, they may go flat, but, you know, they probably won't. So it would be nice to provide an opportunity for the public to hear what we have in mind, you know, what, what the issue is, bottom line, big numbers, all that kind of stuff, and explain why the rates are going up, how they're going to go up, how long, do that kind of a presentation, and then allow the public an opportunity to have feedback on it before we weigh in and vote. Is not everyone, is that a hearing? Do we do a hearing if we change rates?
Yes.
I think we do. So, I mean, not everyone is going to make the hearing, and some people will want to get feedback before we make it. It's always good to hear what the public is thinking, and if no one shows up, no one shows up, but at least we make an effort.
Thinking as...
Thank you.
I was thinking as part of this is, we probably should wait till their recommendation. You put the recommendation out there, you ask for feedback, you get the feedback before the public hearing to raise the rates. Is that the way you're thinking, Dan?
Exactly.
Is we, we really won't know what to present to the public until they came, come back with recommendations.
Correct.
So once, I guess their report would be complete, then we would put it out to the public. Is that what you're thinking, Terry?
And typically, we've gone to NIBCA at one of their meetings and presented to them before we actually went out to the public, in case they had any, you know, large comments on it that's something we needed to look at. And then education's going to be a big thing in this. We're going to need to educate the public on why, if the rates go up, cap fees go up, we need to educate them as to why that is happening and what our plans are in the future.
Sam, does that give you direction, then?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Perfect. Other questions for Terry? If there are any other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 18-003, Approving the Consultant Services Agreement with FSS FCS Group, Inc. for a Weight Water Rate Study. Wow, wow, wow.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Amy?
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Next, we have an authorization of grants submitted for Sherman Avenue, Lakeside Avenue Traffic Signal, LHSIP Grant. Chris Posley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me up here today to speak to you. The reason why I'm here is because, as your city engineer, I've been looking for ways to stretch our tax dollars, and an opportunity that we have found is upgrading all of our signals downtown. You can see in the display that that includes the downtown core of Sherman and also Lakeside Avenue. With this upgrade, what would be involved is essentially taking all of the electronics off of the existing poles, leaving the poles there, which hopefully we would have an opportunity to paint those or work with the Downtown Business Association on that. And then we would put in new signal heads and pedestrian push buttons, pedestrian signals. If the cabinets were good, we would leave them and put in new internals of the electronics inside. Otherwise, we would replace the cabinet itself, and this would help us to improve our ADA accessibility downtown. It would also help us to move traffic through, because we could then get the signals to talk to each other and adapt to changing traffic patterns, whereas right now, some of these signals are 25 years old, and we have issues here and there, as you may have observed, with the detection failing on them, and when that goes bad, it just kind of goes into a cycle, a timed cycle, and then you have to sit there and wait for a minute to two for your signal to turn green and move on, and we're hoping that we can take care of all of this with this grant that is actually due on Thursday. So I would submit the grant tomorrow if, given the approval, to do so, and our obligation to that would be $84,190 is the estimate of a 7.34% federal match on that grant, and that would give us about $1.1 million in signal upgrades in our downtown. The project wouldn't be until 2020, so we wouldn't have to have the money until that point, so we'd have time to get this into our budget cycle and factor it in that way. But this is an opportunity that came up, so we just thought that this might be a win-win for us, so let's see where this goes. So I would entertain any questions you have on this.
Questions for Chris. Woody?
Chris, a couple of them. The fact that you're even looking at all this is pretty amazing. Let me ask you this, right off the top, is by doing something like this, can you eliminate some of those? Do you have to have a traffic signal at every corner? Is that just the way it is or has always been?
It probably wouldn't be a good idea to eliminate them, because the traffic circulation kind of depends on it, and we've gone through this once before, a few years back, when we removed a signal on Sherman, and then it was put back in again.
This street?
Yes, so we don't want to replay that again, but this will definitely help the signals to communicate with each other and be able to move traffic better.
The restrictions on this particular grant are, would seem like 1.1 would go a long ways all over the city, some older parts of town where the pucks are wearing out and things like that. The focus on downtown is because concentration?
Well, part of this grant was to identify places that had some safety issues, because it's a safety grant. So the consultant that put this grant together had taken all of the pedestrian crashes, bicycle crashes, vehicle crashes, and factored that in. And expanding outside of this area would, would reduce our cost-benefit ratio and make it less likely to be awarded the grant. Reducing the number of signals could increase that a little bit if we just stuck with Sherman, but we found that rolling in Lakeside with, into that grant doesn't affect the cost-benefit ratio too bad, and we can really get some good bang for our buck on that.
Would this include any flashing yellow lefts?
I believe they would. I think we do have some four-section heads in there. I couldn't tell you exactly which ones they were, but we have a spreadsheet that says what each signal, which improvements would be at each one.
Okay, thanks.
You're a fan of the flashing yellows?
They work really well where I see them, you know?
Any other questions for Chris?
I, I do. Chris, thanks for getting back to me. I had a whole laundry list, and I appreciated the late notice of you getting back to me and getting that all cleared up, and you've addressed almost all of those, but just so I'm making sure, one of the things I had wondered is if this would prohibit us from getting a similar grant for the East Sherman area as that's being expanded, or as the parking garage comes online if there's more signals needed? And if you can just speak to that, there was some two-year timeframe or something like that that wouldn't cause a problem for us moving forward with this current grant?
Yes, of course. So this grant, which hopefully comes up every year, it doesn't always, but it has been coming up yearly, and with this grant, if, if we were awarded this, we would not be allowed to apply for this safety grant on these intersections for two years, which isn't bad. We can apply for the safety grant next year in other areas of the city that just can't be at these ones, because we need a two-year time span to go by for us to really evaluate whether these safety improvements are working or not. So when this grant becomes available again, we can look to upgrade some signals on East Sherman or around the parking garage if they're needed there, or other areas that we see need.
Great, so we aren't, we aren't losing out on the future opportunities, so that's good to know.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, it's me. When we had the consultant out for East Sherman, he recommended that we not have pedestrian push buttons on signals downtown, that it'd just be on a timer. Have you looked into that?
No, you, so in some big cities with high pedestrian, high pedestrian traffic, they do that to kind of, as a help to the pedestrians to cross the road. It does slow down vehicle traffic, because even if there are no pedestrians there, you've got to wait for the full cycle length for the pedestrian crosswalk to go through. So it comes up regardless. And one thing you can't do with, with those types is to have the push buttons that, that give you some feedback, where they talk to you and say, "Walk sign is on," or things like that. And so some municipalities are kind of shying away from that situation.
The other question I have is a budgetary question. So this is 85K in the budget that we don't have, and we don't have to spend it until 2020.
Correct.
But what, aren't we then creating an obligation for a future council to spend that money? And I know that's probably not an engineer's question, that's a financial question, and he's not here, so...
They always have the option of turning it down.
And, and that's right. They do have the option of turning it down, but that's not, I mean, if we, if we sign a contract, basically, we're promising that we're going to come up with a federal grant. So what I'd like to propose is that if we, if council wants to do this tonight, is that we actually put the money in next year's budget and just not spend it, and keep rolling it over, and we've done that before. We've had consultant money that has sat in the budget for a while, and it just keeps passing from, from budget to budget, and so therefore, we would agree that this would be funded in next year's budget, which we can do, and we just wouldn't pay for it, and then roll it into, to the 18, 19 budget, and then the 19, 20 budget, so that it would be there. So that would be my solution to that. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that legally, or if that matters?
Well, I think that, that works fine. I think, you know, the Article 8, Section 3 constitutional limitation that I think you're referring to has language about expenditures that exceed the revenue in that year, and so if this was, you know, a much larger number, maybe that, we'd bump up against that, but I think you can enter into longer-term agreements or contracts that don't exceed what you anticipate as your revenues.
Okay, so as long, as long as it wouldn't bust the budget in that year, and they would have to borrow money for it to meet the obligation? Okay, so then we're cool.
Yeah, I think the goal legislature, when the Constitution was passed, was that one council didn't leave a huge, you know, debt or some indebtedness for the next council to come clean up, and so that's, but if you're within your revenues or typical revenues, it's fine.
Okay, I appreciate that, and so I appreciate that you're going to be painting the poles. That's something Suzie always tells me, that she hates it, that they only paint, you know, as high as they can reach. So, so that's good. This may open a can of worms, and here I am. There's been talk about changing... There's been talk about changing the direction on Sherman and Lakeside so that Sherman goes east and Lakeside goes west, and we have two more one-way streets downtown. If that ever came into fruition, and I've talked to people who support that, and that issue isn't up for debate tonight, but if that happened, how would it impact this?
Well, each of those signals would have to be reconfigured to put the heads on the right sides and things like that. I assume that it could be accomplished. It wouldn't be free to accomplish that, but I don't know how likely that is to happen in the near future of switching to two-way, unless you have some insight on that.
No, I was just, I just wanted to see what the, how flexible these things were.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ron.
Yeah. You're going to submit this proposal on the 18th?
It's due the 18th, so I was going to try, send it in tomorrow. Well, not try, but do it.
Okay. When do you think we would hear about it then?
This one, I think, would be later in this month even. I'm not exactly sure. I know that there's, I think it's a couple months from now before they would decide this. There's a board meeting down in Boise where they bring these applications in together and decide on them and vote on them.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Dan.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm impressed on the timing. Reminds me of some old term papers. I knew that you're going to get the green light tonight, stay up all night, get this baby ready, and then submit it tomorrow, so.
I wanted to bring it to Public Works first, but we didn't have it all together in time, so that's why I'm here instead.
Well, actually, it sounds, I mean, it's well worth it if we can get it and anything to help with the traffic flow down there so that if I'm coming up Fourth Street, I can actually get across Sherman without hopping out of my car to hit the pedestrian button, so go for it.
Any other questions? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
I would make a motion to authorize grant submittal of an LHSIP grant for Sherman Avenue, Lakeside traffic signals.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our public hearings. Excuse me. This is a legislative hearing. This is for short-term rentals as follows. The short-term vacation rental permits for the first year will be $285. Short-term vacation rental permits renewals after that, $96. We will, we have a sign-up sheet in back for anyone wishing to give public testimony. And Sean Holm is our presenter. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Rewind the clock one month ago, and everybody should remember that we had passed the vacation rental ordinance. Prior to that, I did send out an email to our group of over 300 email recipients and stakeholders in anticipation of setting this fee. I thought at the time that it would happen at the same time that we passed the ordinance, but I was corrected, and we are here tonight to discuss that. So the stakeholders have been notified. I have received some feedback. Most of it was, this is very reasonable. We did get some that are, you know, I own three of these, and that's $1,000, and it's a little outrageous. So the pendulum swings. But just for council's information, we did send out emails to departments requesting what they expected the time to take to process this. They compared it to somewhat similar to our food truck ordinance in timeframe. We applied the fully loaded wage rate to that and came up with these fees, and that's how they were generated. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Questions for Sean. Okay.
Thank you.
If there's any questions. If there's any questions, at this time, I will open public testimony. Sam, would you see if there's any signatures on the back page here?
There isn't.
Okay. So if seeing no signatures to testify and no one in the audience wishes to testify, I will now close the public testimony portion of that and look for council action.
I'm feeling this undue pressure here. You know, for all we've been through on this thing, you know, I need to support it. We need to start somewhere. I'm not exactly happy with the pricing, but it's, if it's what it costs to do it through the process, and I guess it's a beginning, you know, it's a start. A lot of people have put input here, and I think, I think we must, need, think we need this, you know, to make it a better place or something. So I will make a motion to, what am I making a motion to?
To approve this.
Thank you. Motion to approve Resolution 18004 approving fees for short-term rentals as follows. Short-term vacation rentals, first year, $285. And short-term vacation rental permits, renewals, $96.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would I bet with Sean today? I asked him, sent him an email and went over the fee structure because I was curious, how do you judge, justify this fee? And how do you know, you know, how much time is going to be spent in planning or building, inspecting, or other things based on something we've never done before? So they ballpark it, and, you know, it may be too high, it may be too low. We'll figure it out. I mean, as it goes out and we, and the dust settles, they'll figure it out. But you're right, you've got to start somewhere. That being said, I still will oppose this because I think the whole thing is done wrong. I think we should cut a break to people who live in their vacation rentals as home occupant permits. And I think that the non-owner occupied do deserve a higher level of inspection, which would justify a higher fee. So again, I will be opposing this. But the numbers, the numbers are okay. Sean went over the numbers with me, and I think, I think they're good.
Kiki.
Sean, how many people did you say weighed in? Did you have a number of how many people weighed in on this actual structure after the hearing?
I do not have an exact number because they came in different forms. Some of them were by email, a few were by phone. So, you know, if I had to make an estimate, it was probably eight.
So it was majority thought it was reasonable, or where are you at with that?
Of those eight, five or six were okay with it, and I had a couple that were not happy.
Thank you. And then is this something that you'll review? Do you have a timeframe that you'll review this structure to say this is, or is it just an annual, we're going to see how it goes?
At this point, it is set up to be an annual renewal. I would say after we get the initial buy-in and then we get the one-year renewal after the, so a two-year window, we'll have a really good idea of where we sit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If there's no discussion, roll call, please, Amy.
Gookin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger? Ettinger?
Yeah, I heard you.
He's pondering.
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sean. We'll move on to our next legislative hearing. This is the 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan Goals, Proposed Activities, Estimated Funding the City Expect to Receive, and the Expected Beneficiaries of the Community Development Block Grant. Again, a legislative hearing, there's a sign-up sheet in back. And Michelle is here tonight for the presentation.
My goodness, I think I need a shorter title next time. Sorry about that. So it's nice to see you all again. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the the five-year draft plan for the consolidated plan and the 2018 Annual Action Plan Budget for the city's Community Development Block Grant. You all have worked with CDBG now for several years, so some of what I have to share with you tonight will be a repeat of what you may already know. But I am required by HUD to share these two planning goals with you and to collect any public input tonight, as well as your suggestions and any support you have for these two plans. So I'm going to take you briefly through a few things, including a brief history of the city's involvement with CDBG funds, what's involved in a consolidated planning process, our citizen participation results, 2018 and 2022 suggested funding goals, and the 2018 Annual Action Plan Budget. Excuse me. So this is a grant that the city receives from the Housing and Urban Development Agency to support low-to-moderate-income residents. The city has received two five-year successful plans with a total allocation of nearly $3 And these are the suggested goals to guide CDBG funding in program years 2018 through 2022. You may recognize them, and that is because they align 100% with the past five-year plan goals. I'm going to take you just quickly through these. Goal one, increase the supply of affordable for-sale housing, increase the supply of affordable rental housing, improve the city's sidewalks and make them more accessible for ADA, continue with neighborhood revitalization efforts, expand economic development opportunities, and offer public service program assistance. Each year funded CDBG activities must meet a national objective and be a HUD-approved activity, must meet annual action plan guidance and consolidated plan goals, and be an activity that is feasible for CDBG staff to monitor and administer. So some goal successes in 2013 through 2017 include that all projects entered into proceeded as anticipated. Two goals that did not receive funding, however, were increase of for-sale affordable housing and economic development. And part of the reason for that is that those two goals are very expensive on their own, so the city would need partners to enter into projects. In the past, the city met the increase of for-sale affordable housing goal in a partnership with Habitat for Humanity by providing infrastructure support to some new home builds, serving low-to-moderate-income residents. Both of these objectives are available every year through the Community Opportunity Grant, Highlights from the last five years include 81 homes that have been rehabilitated through the city's Emergency Minor Home Repair Program. Some fixes included roof repair, electrical and plumbing repair, ADA bathroom upgrades, heating systems that died in winter. You know, we were able to get people back into heated homes, ADA-compliant sidewalks. One project that was conducted was on Harrison Avenue. The last five years have included many successful projects run through the city's Community Development Block Grant funded by, or excuse me, run through the Community Opportunity Grant funded by the CDBG grant. Some of the projects included activities like rehabilitation of multi-unit rental units owned by Trinity Group Homes. That project served adults with severe and persistent mental illness. Acquisition of St. Vincent de Paul's Help Center, which serves homeless or near homeless youth and adults in our community. And personnel and operating costs for Children's Village, a nonprofit that serves vulnerable children in our community. So those are just a few examples of successful projects. And here, broken down by HUD allowable activity, is an outline of funds spent in the last five years with a total allocation of almost $1.5 million. You will notice, if you were to add up all of the numbers listed, about a $200,000 discrepancy from the 1.5 million allocation. And that is because of our late allocation last year from HUD, receiving 2017's allocation in November. So those funds are already dedicated, and the city has several projects and programs in motion currently, including four recently awarded Community Opportunity Grants, a $50,000 Emergency Minor Home Repair Program, and a Sidewalk Improvement Fund. In regards to the five-year consolidated planning process, the city participated in the following events and requirements: two public meetings and a public hearing tonight; provided outreach to community stakeholders; and posted a draft of its five-year plan online, available for 30-day public comment. The city also sponsored an area analysis in 2015 to guide goal development, and that was done by BBC Research and Consulting. BBC suggested after its findings that the city should fund affordable housing activities and for improving housing accessibility and activities to reduce barriers to housing choice, which could be continuing fair housing education. Information relating to the consolidated plan and 2018 Annual Action Plan was made public in a variety of ways, including the quarterly press notices, public education and government channel ads, city Facebook and website updates, community flyers, and ongoing email communications with 139 community stakeholders. Public input reflected the needs and desire to continue funding all former goals with an increased focus on economic development. Attachment two that I provided for you does have some brief examples of excerpts of public comment, and all are posted online on the city's website, along with the draft of the consolidated plan. And once more, here are the suggested funding goals for 2018 through 2022. Transitioning now to the 2018 Annual Action Plan Budget, this chart outlines funding suggestions based on the draft consolidated plan goals and community desires reflected in the city's CDBG public outreach efforts. These are budget outlines, however, I'll mention because these are based on projected funding for 2018 of $243,000 by HUD, which is about $60,000 less than we received this year. And I wanted to point out that the largest percent that you see here, 53.5% of the funding allotment, excuse me, would go towards community, excuse me, would go towards the Community Opportunity Grant cycle each year, or at least this is for 2018, which would include public service activities, increase of for-sale housing opportunities, or increase of affordable rental housing, and also economic development. Really, all of the six goals that we have outlined for you can be funded through the Community Opportunity Grant. And it's because it's been so successful in the past five years, really the past 10 years, as far as getting the funding out to the community, that's our suggestion going forward. And then we do have a 20.5% Emergency Minor Home Repair Budget, a 6% Sidewalk Accessibility Budget, and then $20,000 admin budget to cover the monitoring and administration of the city's projects and programs for CDBG. Okay. Thank you very much, and I stand for questions.
Questions for Michelle. Woody.
Michelle, so the new budget, 2018, is that much different from the last budget, percentage-wise?
Um, let's see.
I was trying to look at them side by side, and I couldn't find anything to do that with.
Oh, you're, yeah. So our 2017 budget, I believe, was 301,000, something with, and some change there. So about a $60,000 difference. You're going to make me do math?
But no, but just the percentage that changes, same categories. You're working the sidewalks, fix the houses, and then that one that spreads for the good of all.
Oh, yes. So I, we based, let me go back to that page for you. So we based most of these funding suggestions off of last year's funding cycle. So last year, 14,600 was reserved for sidewalks, $50,000 set aside for emergency minor home repair. And then after admin, the remainder was put into the Community Opportunity Grants.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions for Michelle? Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but $50,000 worth of Michelle, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but $50,000 worth of MRAP, Emergency Minor Home Repairs, about how many repairs would that be based on previous data? I mean, I know you can't, but how many people would benefit from that?
Well, so on average, on average, when a program runs for that $50,000 Emergency Minor Home Repair, we allow up to $5,000 per household maximum, but it seems like the average is about $2,500 for the fix. Some can be as inexpensive as $500 or up to $5,000 with the owner matching the rest of any needed funds, but on average, it's about $2,500. We do as it is a minimum of, or excuse me, a maximum of $5,000. If there was, you know, 10 maximum applications, that would be 10 households per year for this funding cycle. But we can assume that it's going to be as much as 20, as many as 20.
Have we ever in the past had a situation where it was underfunded and we have to turn people away?
I believe so. But because our funds tend to roll over, for instance, we have $3,000 left in 2016 budget for Emergency Minor Home Repair. So we use that first before we go into 2017 budget. So sometimes we'll have some in reserve that we use first, but as we get our grant cycle, there seems to be enough. Although, I know that in past years, our former administrator did tell me that we did have to tell people that they had to wait and apply again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ron.
Yes. Say, if we wanted to increase something, how do we go about doing it?
Sure. Well, I'll take all suggestions tonight, and if it's not more than 20%...
Okay. Say, like, a grant application for Lake City's Centers Meals on Wheels.
Yes. And thank you for bringing that up. I forgot to mention. So in this 129,800 budget, that 53.5, that does include the $3,000 annual non-competitive allotment toward the Meals on Wheels program. It's not noted here. It's noted on a different attachment I gave you. But that does include the $3,000 grant to Meals on Wheels.
You said it includes what?
That $129,800 allotment to Community Opportunity Grants. That includes the $3,000 Meals on Wheels non-competitive grant annually. Or, so you're wanting to increase that amount?
So if I wanted to, if we wanted to increase that, say from 3,000 to, say, 5,000, what do we do?
Well, you're welcome to request, certainly, and...
Okay. I'm making a motion that we raise it to 5,000.
Okay.
Michelle, a question for you. Does that take away from anything else, or is there reserve funds that, so Ron would like to increase it from three to five, does that mean some other category gets reduced?
Well, I would imagine you're saying that some of that reserve fund of $3,000 would raise to 5,000, and it would come from that same Community Opportunity Grant pot of money? Or do you suggest it coming from somewhere else?
Hadn't really thought about it.
Well, generally...
Where would you suggest?
I think the Community Opportunity Grant would be a good way to make sure that that happens.
Well, actually, the Community Opportunity, people apply for that.
Yeah, yes.
So increasing the funds from three to five would just mean there would be less money for everyone else to fight over.
That's true. Yeah. Yeah. The allocation for Meals on Wheels is the only non-competitive grant that we've set up so far, that we provide to Lake City Center on an annual basis. And speaking with the director of Lake City Center, I believe that he told me that that $3,000 fund covers one month of food for their program. So I'm sure they would appreciate more, certainly. I wouldn't recommend cutting the Sidewalk Accessibility Repair Fund. One of the things we do here is, because that is such a small pot of money for projects that can be so expensive, we tend to save a couple years and then do a larger project. So for instance, 2017 still has $14,600 in it for sidewalks. And part of that has been working with the Streets Department to find time to do that in summer. But right now, having this money allocated in 2018, that'll be about $30,000 to do a larger project with our streets. So...
So, Michelle, a question for you. Of the 243, we're going to be going through a process for people to come and apply for that, 243, but there's been some money already allocated? Is that what I'm...
Oh, you know, that 243, that's the total expected allocation.
But we haven't specifically allocated that out yet?
Yes.
So you've allocated all of that, all of it has been allocated?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. This is unallocated. 2017 is allocated.
So 2017 has been allocated. 2018 hasn't been allocated yet.
Yes. That's correct.
So the Meals on Wheels, which you're saying is 3,000, you're going to come back to us with a list of things for us to approve of that $243,000 for 2018. Is that correct? Or how's that going to work?
Now's the time.
Well, the grants, how do the grants come in? So someone does it, so like for MRAP, you guys deal with that?
Yes.
But for the bigger grants, like we just approved one a couple of weeks ago for Trinity Homes and a bunch of other agencies...
For 2017, right?
Yeah, but that was last year. So they will come to us out of the Community Opportunity thing. But the other items, so administration, that's already spoken for. MRAP, people have to apply for that, but that's the amount allocated for that. So really, the only amount that we have, if we want to do more for Meals on Wheels, comes out of Community Opportunity Grants.
Or the sidewalk.
Well, okay.
Dan.
Well, a couple of questions on that. You've said that there are some previous years, you know, basically fund balance that we haven't spent. Is there any unexpended funds in this category? I guess that's one question. And then also, under administration, 20%, you know, the employees' wages and things are locked in. But I see where it's advertising, supplies, fees, brochures, and we're only talking about $2,000 more to get from three to five. It would seem to me like that might be a pretty fruitful category to come up with, 2,000.
That's true. And historically, on average, CDBG through the city has cost about $48,000 annually. That does include administration and travel and training. In the past, funding has been about $300,000 a year. So 20% of that's been about $60,000 allowed, and the city has averaged about $48,000 for admin.
Spends?
Mm-hmm.
So do we have some unspent money in that category from previous?
So no. No, we don't, because the city chose, often chose, as I understand it, to roll any excess funds into the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program. So any unspent admin would go into some of the other programs. I will say, 2017's budget had, so it had $90,880 set aside for its Community Opportunity Grants, and Mayor and City Council allocated $88,000 for grants. So we do have a slight excess in 2017 that we were going to put into Emergency Minor Home Repair Program for 2017's budget, because there is a little bit left, well, quite a bit left. So that fund was going to become about $52,000. So on your recommendation, if you'd like to reserve those extra Community Opportunity Grant funds into Meals on Wheels.
So a question, Michelle, then. In the approval process tonight, the council will be voting on, how many specifics are they approving? I guess I'm a little confused on that, because on the Community Opportunity Grants, people are going to be applying for that, but you're saying that there's Meals on Wheels already applied for 3,000?
As I understand, based on City Council's past recommendations, there was supposed to be an annual allocation out of our Community Opportunity Grants. Were we to designate Opportunity Grants, 3,000 of that would be non-competitive.
Is that, so there is just 3,000 of the 129,800? There's only 3,000 that is, as you said, non-competitive, that's set aside for Meals on Wheels?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
If I understand this right, what we're talking about here is not really those dollar amounts, but the percentages. So except for in the Community Opportunity Grant, where there's a non-competitive grant, in other words, that $3,000 is just something nobody else can apply for. It's a given that it's going to come out of the 53.5% of that fund. So if we raise that by $2,000, and what it looks like is you're conservatively estimating this to be 243 for a total, but that dollar amount could be higher, the percentages would then remain the same.
Yes, exactly.
So in my thinking, if this council wants to increase the Meals on Wheels by $2,000 out of the Community Opportunity Grant, the probability that there's going to be as much money as last year in that same fund is there. You know, that 53% could be a little higher than 129, so...
It could be, yes.
And so I'm thinking that there's probably not a huge risk factor with doing that, although this is an ongoing, non-competitive line item, so I don't know. But it'll be reviewed every time this comes up for discussion on plans and goals, anyway. So further to that, do you know if there's any major, through HUD or federal funding, that's cutting the Meals on Wheels programs locally?
I don't know federally for Meals on Wheels.
Sure. I'm not sure.
Yeah. I just know our community's growing, and that number's been the same for a long time. So I'm just thinking that we probably would be pretty prudent to take a look at increasing that and probably not hurt the amount of money in the pot for the rest of the Opportunity Grants.
Dan.
I have a question for Ron. So, Ron, why increase it 2,000? What is the...
I just thought it was a nice round number.
Okay. Michelle said, though, that it's, so that they, it cost them $3,000 a month. So we're paying for one month right now. Why don't we just go to two?
Great idea.
Well, I guess the question would be, Meals on Wheels gets a lot of their funding from federal government, variety of sources. What is their need? I think we want to match their need. If there's a shortfall, we want to help out. From talking with those folks, maybe, Ron, do you know, is there a shortfall in the Meals on Wheels program?
There is sometimes, yes.
Yeah.
And Meals on Wheels, it's, the participants have been increasing all the time.
How long has it been three? Do you know? Do you remember?
No.
I believe that City Council asked that these funds be reserved in 2016, and so far, we have allocated one $3,000 grant, with another coming from our 2017 late-received grant.
So we could increase it to five and have some conversations with them if, on potential shortfalls? They could come back and make an additional request if they had a shortfall?
That's cool.
Yes, and they're certainly welcome to apply for the Community Opportunity Grant as well, for any larger needs. I believe that the city actually did do a project with Lake City Center for improvement on their kitchen.
We bought a stove, didn't we, or a refrigerator?
So, Ron, so a part of your approval process of this, you would like to see $5,000 dedicated to Meals on Wheels to go towards bridging the gap? If there is a gap, if there's a further gap, we would encourage them to apply for additional funding? Does that make sense, Michelle? Yeah, okay. Any other question?
So, Michelle, what constitutes a non-competitive grant? Can anybody do that, or does it, it still has to come through here?
I believe the way we've set this up is that it has to come through here. So, and another way to think about this is that a lot of our public input placed emphasis on economic development, specifically in the redevelopment area of East Sherman. So if the City Council wanted to allocate half of the Opportunity Grant budget purely for applications in or near East Sherman, then we could perhaps make, you could perhaps make those suggestions. And that would be somewhat non-competitive, but it would still be competitive.
Why would East Sherman qualify for that?
Part of East Sherman does sit in a low to moderate income census tract. And if, you know, as far as collaboration with city interests and serving the public of that area, working to kind of curb some slumming blight, or increase parking for new businesses, those things are allowed through economic development, and also public service-type projects.
So this last, this last year, I sat on that committee with you to pick these people that wanted things, and it was an interesting process. My question, though, is that came out of the Community Opportunity Grants, and the theory was to touch a lot of people and help a lot. Not big, not 20 and $30,000 projects, but things that could, what we accomplished. It would seem like this non-compete grant, we could get a little upside down on it, right, and start committing things before anybody else in that number would dwindle what could go out to people that come up with an idea for fixing things or some of the things we just did. Non-competitive grant, it's, I don't think it's, I've thought about it much. I mean, I like the idea that it's doing food for the things, but could it, I worry if it could get too sideways and go down a different path, you know? St. Vincent's would be out there for their coffee fund. We need $1,000 a year for coffee for the homeless folks that show up in the morning, you know? Things like that, is that, that would fit, right? But is that appropriate?
Well, we would certainly, we would certainly never do that without council directive.
No, I get it. But it would have to come here, and we would fight it out for coffee money or whatever, you know?
Dan.
Well, for one thing, I would say if they came and they needed breakfast money, that might not be a bad thing. And I guess my take on this is we've got, in that Community Opportunity Grant, and it can only be 15% I see of the total, you know, about $130,000. If we're spending 3,000, I guess what, the way I see it, is we are saying that, you know what? Right off the bat, this little slice, and I mean little, it'd be less than 3%, probably about 2%, we are going to prioritize feeding seniors as, you know, that's kind of a foundational thing we're going to do. And if we went to 5,000, you know, it's still only about 4%. And I see it as very appropriate that, you know, out of all of the things that we could do, we're going to set a little piece that we say that's the foundation, and then we have some discretionary beyond that. But I think that's an appropriate thing to do, an appropriate level, so good idea, Ron.
Well, and I'm supporting it. I'm supporting that. My question is, though, this could become a monster, right?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it depends on how you define monster, but I mean, could that part of it grow, I suppose, but...
The non-competitive...
But every time, it's going to come up for discussion, and we get to chime in on it.
Michelle, maybe if you would, describe a little bit about this non-competitive process and the thought behind it, and why. I fully support Ron on the Meals on Wheels program, but why do we do it as part of this grant process?
I think for us, it's just a way of tracking those funds and making sure that we stay underneath our 15% public service cap. So of the total allocation, only 15% can go towards public service-type activities, which would include a service program like assisting seniors with food security. So because we have this pot of money set up, this is just the way we run it through, because when, as Woody knows, when we were doing our Community Opportunity Grants, we were really clear on, this is our cap for public service, and we have to stay below this. So it's just a way of routing out our public service-type activities and funneling our funds. As far as... Well, to my knowledge, this is the only non-competitive grant that the city's entered into through CDBG funds, so it really can be, you know, what you want to make it.
Is it a situation where a non-competitive grant, such as granting that to Meals on Wheels, is just a bit of a priority for council? is just a bit of a priority for council?
Mm-hmm, I believe so, that's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you very much. Now we will open our public comment portion of the hearing. There is no names on the list. Anyone in the audience wish to give a public comment?
I cleared the room out.
Don't see anyone wishing to give public comment. So I will, this time, close the public testimony and look for council action. So Ron, if you wanted to go ahead and make your motion at this time with the amount for Meals on Wheels?
I move that we increase the Meals on Wheels to 5,000, 2,000 more.
Along with the, with the approval of the consolidated plan?
Right, right.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion on that? There's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Michelle. You have to say that since you've, how long have you been on board now, Michelle?
About five and a half months.
And you have really hit the ground running in this program, and you've done a wonderful job.
You got it down.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. It's an exciting program to work on, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your work on that.
If we like her so much, can we have her at the start of the meeting next time?
Good.
Clear your room out, don't do it.
All right, so now the next piece of business. Woody, I think you can handle that.
I move to adjourn. Jim and you?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.